Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on General Welfare. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Just a reminder, no one may approach the dais at any point during this hearing. Chair Ayala, we are ready to begin.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to today's hearing. My name is Diana Ayala, and I am the Deputy Speaker of the New York City Council and the Chair of the General Welfare Committee. Today, we are holding an oversight hearing on families with children in DHS shelters. We will also be hearing five bills. The first, Intro 123, which I have sponsored, would preclude DHS from requiring that every member of the family be present at the PATH intake center when the family seeks placement at a shelter. Currently, DHS requires that children under the age of 21 be present with their adult family members at PATH, the facility that processes shelter applications. There is no good reason for this policy, which makes the shelter application process unduly burdensome for families. The second bill, Intro 124, which I also sponsored, would require DHS to provide process navigator services to every family with children at an intake shelter. Site, this process navigator would provide assistance to shelter applicants in helping them to understand the procedures, meetings, interviews, and documents necessary to complete the shelter application process and to answer any questions. The next bill, Intro 440, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would require DHS to ensure that eligibility specialists are available at every shelter to assist residents with determining eligibility for public assistance benefits. Intro 453, sponsored by Councilmember Sandra Ung, would require DHS to establish additional intake centers for families with children in boroughs other than the Bronx. Finally, Intro 460, also sponsored by Councilmember Ung, would require DHS to report on the feasibility of partnering with community-based organizations to accept and process applications for shelter intake for families and children. Onto our oversight topic for today. The DHS shelter system is designed to provide temporary emergency shelter to families with no other housing options available to them. At a citywide level, the overall families of families with children entering DHS shelters has increased dramatically over the last few years. As compared to the first four months of fiscal year 23, the first four months of fiscal year 24 saw a 147% increase in entries to shelter for families with children. While average lengths of stay have decreased, this greater number of clients utilizing families with children shelters has strained an already overburdened system, and we must start to think outside of the box as to how we can better support families in shelter transition into permanent housing, freeing up vacancies to shelter other families entering the system. We also know of the inefficiencies in the shelter application process for families with children. Families all across the city must travel to PATH intake center located in the Bronx. Upon doing so, they often have to endure waiting on long lines with their children present, with limited resources and staff interactions while waiting for hours. There are so many drivers of homelessness for families with children, including a lack of affordable housing, poverty, unemployment, and domestic violence. Families with children experiencing homelessness have several unique needs, from childcare to educational support to employment assistance to income support to mental health counseling and trauma-informed care. We want to know what the administration is doing to meet these needs. We also want to learn more about the specific ways that DHS is responding to the needs of those families who are asylum seekers. We are particularly troubled by reports that asylum-seeking families with children have been receiving notices to transfer out of their current shelters within 24 to 48 hours, despite the administration's assurance that these families are not subject to the 60-day rule, limiting their stay in city-operated shelters to 60 days. I look forward to hearing from the administration, providers, and advocates in gathering feedback on this oversight topic and of all of the relevant current issues, as well as on the bills on our agenda. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here today, councilmembers Riley Caban, Ose, and Ung. I'd also like to thank the committee's staff, who worked diligently to prepare this hearing. Amenta Kilowan, our senior legislative counsel, Nina Rosenberg, policy analyst, Julia Harimis, unit head, Faria Ramon, finance analyst, and finally, my staff, Elsie Encarnacion, chief of staff. I will now turn it over to our public advocate, Jomani Williams, to deliver a statement.
Thank you so much. So my name is Jomani Williams, public advocate of the City of New York. Thank you, Deputy Speaker Ayala and the members of the Committee on General Welfare for holding this hearing. In March 2024, 69% of those in shelters were members of homeless families, including 48,304 children. There are families experiencing homelessness for a variety of reasons in every neighborhood and community in our city. They are neighbors, friends, classmates, colleagues, students, and loved ones. It is our moral and legal duty to provide shelter to those experiencing homelessness, and we should all prioritize creating permanent, affordable, accessible housing for everyone who needs it. The current time limit set by this administration violates the spirit of our city's longstanding right to shelter. Our city cannot bear the cost of housing and providing service to our newest New Yorkers alone, but evicting them, including families with children, from shelter is not the solution, particularly when there's no real casework for many of these families and not without timely communication. While the administration says that the 30- and 60-day shelter limits for migrants have contributed to a cost reduction, the consequences of that decision do not outweigh the benefits. Children displaced from their schools and communities just when they are settling into normalcy, people lined up overnight on the streets in freezing temperature, anxiety, confusion is particularly unacceptable. I also want to mention an administration that prides itself on diversity. To have this new policy affect primary Black migrants is particularly disturbing. In October of last year, Mayor Adams announced that the 60-day shelter limit would be extended to migrant families with children, who represent about 75% of the migrant shelter population. In the time since, thousands of families have been given notice or evicted. This policy has been a catastrophe for these families and especially the children. Nearly 1 in 5 migrant children evicted from their shelters had their schooling interrupted, with 2/3 of those students no longer enrolled in New York City public schools at all. In addition, many migrant children who have moved far from their schools are now spending a large portion of their days on transportation if their buses arrive at all. For children who have already experienced massive disruption in their lives, leaving their countries and coming to a new city on top of the trauma they may have endured, this is particularly devastating. Students become attached to their schools, teachers, and classmates, and interrupting inconsistency is stressful. Interrupting that consistency is stressful and potentially re-traumatizing. The process for seeking shelter for families, even for non-migrant families, is onerous, with multiple hoops that families must jump through. The entire family, including minor children, must travel to the Prevention Assistance and Temporary Housing PATH Center in the Bronx. This is the only office at which a family can apply for temporary housing. This means that children will likely not be able to attend school that day, instead spending their day in transit and in waiting rooms. Families often wait hours for their appointments, and they are not allowed to bring in outside food. Many families receive temporary overnight placement and must return the next day in the hopes of being placed in a long-term shelter. Some families are deemed ineligible for shelter and must start the process over again. While families can receive a temporary conditional placement while they reapply, they do not become eligible for DHS-specific rent or vouchers until they have a formal placement. For all, but especially children, experiencing homelessness is stressful and traumatic. Many children enter shelter after fleeing abusive or violent environments. Domestic violence is one of the leading causes of homelessness in New York City. In April, Mayor Adams announced a pilot program called Project Home to connect domestic violence survivors with permanent housing, beginning with 100 families with children. Those staying in HRA domestic violence shelters will be eligible for HPD affordable housing, which was previously limited to those in DHS shelters. I applaud the mayor for this effort, and I hope to see more like it in the future. We also want to make sure that we're clear with this policy, we are affecting primarily Black migrants. We're also not keeping track of where they're going. We've seen overcrowding in places like mosques and other spaces that are trying their best to fill the gap. So it's hard pressed to see how we are viewing this as a success. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we have testimony from members of the administration, we will start with a public panel comprised of impacted individuals. Antes de empezar con el testimonio de miembros de la administración, vamos a empezar con un panel público hecho de familias impactadas. We will call Angela Cerda and Nini Beth Rivas. Venga. Is there an interpreter?
Pueden empezar, pero asegúrense que la luz esté... Joa, cuando la aprieten. Ay, okay. Puede empezar cuando quiera.
Eh, acuérdate, dame una pausa para yo. Bueno, buenas tardes con todos. Mi nombre es Angela Cerda. Soy ecuatoriana.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Cerda, and I'm from Ecuador.
El... Bueno, yo llegué aquí un 3 de diciembre del 2022 al Chaste Prozar Par. El inicio fue bien, pero al comienzo nadie nos da bien formación de absolutamente nada de qué procesos tenemos que hacer, cómo tenemos que guiarnos para poder nosotros tener nuestros papeles de trabajo.
So I came to the United States on December 3, 2022. And initially, everything seemed to be going fine. We were placed at the Wynn Shelter in Rosa Parks in South Park Slope, Brooklyn. However, days passed and we started to get a little confused. We were not getting enough orientation. We were not given enough information in terms of how to apply for our immigration papers.
Y totalmente nosotros, y yo, mi esposo, y mis hijos ya ingresamos. Nuestras trabajadoras sociales siempre nos cambiaban de trabajadora social, nunca nos daban información exactamente. Y entonces tuve yo que buscar por otros medios de tratar de hacer mi asilo, mis documentos para yo poder trabajar. Pero ya aún así, no tuve apoyo porque mis papeles, mis correos, iban al lugar donde yo vivía, pero nunca la trabajadora social me informaba de eso. Y entonces ahora yo tengo un problema con mi asilo.
So we were never assigned a case, like a regular case manager. They were different every time, so I wasn't able to follow up on my case. I had to go by myself and do my immigration papers myself. And then I was supposed to receive my mail regarding my paperwork at the shelter, but I never had access to that. My case manager never actually helped me with the correct information. So therefore, as of now, I do not have a working permit, and I'm not able to support myself.
Y entonces pasó eso, y ella me decía que yo esté tranquila, que no va a pasar nada, que nadie me va a sacar del lugar donde yo estoy. Perdón. Pero nunca fue así. No, llegó un día que yo vine con mi niño del hospital porque tuvo un problema. Llegué y me llamaron abajo a recepción y me dijeron que tenía que firmar una hoja. Y como yo estuve con la cabeza de que mi hijo estaba mal, vino el sigur y me dijo que tenía que firmar. Yo firmé sin leerlo porque como era en inglés, yo no sabía de qué se trataba. Firmé y a los 15 minutos llegaron al departamento donde nosotros llegamos. Nos dieron unas bolsas transparentes, como 15 bolsas, y dijeron que teníamos que juntar las cosas ya para irnos a otro lado.
So her case manager kept... She was worried that she wasn't advancing enough with her immigration papers, but the case manager kept telling her, "Don't worry about it. Everything will be okay. You will be okay. Nobody's gonna throw you away from here." But unfortunately, one day, she was coming back from the hospital with her child that was sick, and she was very overwhelmed. And when she got to the building, security or staff member from Wynn Shelter tells her that she needs to sign this paper, that it was in English, she wasn't even understanding what was there. And they just pressured her to sign, and because she was so overwhelmed, she did. And then after that, she was given a bunch of trash bags, and they told her, "You're leaving. You need to put your belongings here. You are being transferred."
Y ella no me supo escuchar incluso. Yo antes de firmar le indiqué los papeles que tenía a mi hijo reposo médico. Y ella dijo, "No, no, no, y no puedo, no puedo. Firmalos tú eso. No es nada... No es nada normal." Dice, "Firmalos." Y una vez que yo los firmé, vino y me dijo, "Tú vas a ser trasladada a un hotel, pero allá va a ser mucho mejor." Pero no, no son las cosas así. Estamos en unas condiciones súper malas. A veces solamente merendamos, o a veces pasamos así todo el día con mis niños. Pero lo que más a mí me duele es el cambio de sitio y de lugar de mis niños, porque ellos son los que tienen más traumas psicológicos. Porque ellos ya aman su escuela, quieren estar en su escuela. No quieren saber nada de cambios porque en la escuela que están ellos les han tratado súper bien. Ellos dicen, "Mami, no. Por favor, mami, no quiero. No me cambies de escuela. Yo tengo mis amigos, mis profesoras. Regresemos de nuevo a la casa de nosotros." Porque ellos pensaban que esa era nuestra casa.
So this paper that she signed, it turns out, it was a notice of transfer. It was given to her with less than 24 hours. And then they just told her, "You're being transferred to a hotel." And then this person...
The case manager fue la que te dijo?
That her case manager tells her, "Don't worry about it. Things are gonna be a lot better for you there." But it turns out, it wasn't. She's been living a nightmare. The conditions that she's now living in this hotel room, they're just so degrading. But the thing that she's worried the most is how her kids have been impacted emotionally because her kids love their school. They have been now traveling a long distance just to go to their school, which is the place that Angela is referring. They tell her, "Mami, I don't want to leave my school. I love this place. And all my friends are there." So she's really living a hard time.
Y en el nuevo lugar que estamos, nos tratan súper mal. Las trabajadoras que son de ahí, donde limpia, ellas nos dicen que somos unas estúpidas, ignorantes, tontas, cochinillas. Encima, que viven de gratis. Nos tratan súper mal, y el estado que estamos ahí, eso les afecta mucho a mis hijos. Que mi pequeño se enferma mucho por la comida. Él consume la comida de ahí, y él va enseguida al baño, le hace mal el estómago. Y eso a mí me duele mucho porque como si a mí me hubiese ayudado la trabajadora social anterior con mis papeles, que ella nunca me informaba de mis correos, yo tuviera un trabajo de donde yo poder darles a mis hijos comida o comprar afuera. Pero lastimosamente, yo no tengo trabajo por mis papeles, mi permiso. Y eso me complica mucho y me duele verles a mis hijos así. Me duele mucho porque a veces no comemos, pasamos así. Y en cambio, donde estábamos, teníamos nuestra cocina. Yo me iba a las iglesias, me regalaban así los enlatados, les preparaba la comida. Mi hijo mayor, él es gordito. Él come mucho. Él come mucho. Y a veces nos acostamos así sin comer.
So this new place that Angela is now, she's just saying how there's a lot of mistreatment that she receives by the staff of the hotel, the cleaning staff. They insult them all the time. They'll tell them that they're stupid, that they are not clean people. They just use a lot of abusive words with her. And again, she's so worried, mainly about her children. They get sick all the time because of the food. The food is just really horrible. And they have to be all the time inside the room. There's nothing for them to do. And... Oh, sorry. And she also said that if it wasn't because of the lack of... You know, the fact that the case manager didn't give her enough orientation in terms of her paperwork, she will now be able to have a working permit and maybe be able to be a little more independent and have a job and be able to support her kids and maybe get some temporary permanent housing. I'm sorry.
Bueno, yo sé que... Yo vine a este lugar fue por un futuro mejor por mis hijos, porque el estado que está pasando en mi país es muy duro. A mi papá, mi papá lo mataron. Mi mamá lastimosamente murió por la noticia de mi papá. Yo no tengo a nadie, a nadie más que a mis hijos. Yo agradezco estar aquí en este lugar. Pero la forma que nos trataron y nos trasladaron de un día para el otro fue algo injusto porque no nos dieron tiempo para nada, para nada. Y el cambio psicológico de mis hijos es muy fuerte porque el pequeño, él no quiere... Él no quiere... Es más, él se da cuenta y él dice, "Mami, tú no tienes dinero. Está bien. Hoy día no comamos."
So she's saying that she came... Basically, she came here to get a better future for her children. Her dad was killed back in her country. Her mom died as a consequence of his dad's death. And they just came here to provide a better life for their children. And the impact that the children have emotionally worries her a lot. And she sees that when her small kid tells her, "Mami, I know today you don't have money to buy me food. It's okay. It's okay. We don't have to eat today."
Bueno, yo les agradezco. Muchas gracias por escucharnos. Y espero que esto pueda ayudar a muchas más familias, que es injusto que nos manden de un día para otro. Yo no entiendo por qué no nos dieron un poquito de tiempo para nosotros poder buscar un lugar mejor porque donde nos enviaron es horrible. Es horrible. Yo sé que no tienen el derecho de darnos la comida o de mantenernos como dicen, pero debería ser muy diferente, más que todo con los niños, porque ellos son los que más sufren.
So thank you very much for listening to me today, says Angela. And... Sorry. She said that she's grateful for all of you for listening to her. She understands that she's not supposed to get free things here. She didn't came here to get free food or free housing or anything like that. But she thinks that it's just unfair the way they are treated, the way they were just transferred from, you know, one day to the other to this place that they're now. Really, the conditions are not very optimal for her, especially for her children.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Nini Beth Rivas. Yo soy de Venezuela. Tengo dos niños. Estoy aquí con mi mamá.
Good afternoon. My name is Nini Beth Rivas. I'm from Venezuela, and I have two children. And I'm here with my two children and my mom.
Yo también fui una de las familias que sacaron del chertay en Park Slope. Ahorita estamos en un hotel en Bestwings. La situación de verdad ha sido muy difícil. Los primeros días que pasamos ahí fueron deprimente. Ahorita, mi mamá está enferma porque en la habitación, no sé, hay animales. Tiene toda la piel.
I was also one of the families that was transferred from Wynn Shelter in South Park Slope. And it's been very difficult for us. The conditions at the hotel are really bad. And...
Que mi mamá está enferma.
She's saying that her mom is sick. And the conditions in the hotel room are just horrible. There are bugs.
También tengo dificultad con los niños para la escuela, para poder trabajar. Prácticamente no puedo trabajar porque los niños no pueden quedarse en el hotel solos. Nos tienen como si nosotros fuéramos unos delincuentes. Nos revisan. No tenemos privacidad. Les revisan las cosas a los niños, sus mochilas.
So I have a lot of difficulties also from my kids commuting to school now that they were a lot far away from the school. I'm not able to work because they will not allow me to leave my children by themselves in the hotel room.
¿Puedes decir la edad de los niños?
Sí, mi hija tiene 16 y mi hijo tiene 13 años.
Even though they are 16 and 13 years old, so I can't work. They will not allow me. They can't stay by themselves. Oh, they treat us basically like we're criminals. They search us. Everything, every time we come into the room, they search our belongings. They just treat us as we were criminals.
Lo que queremos es salir adelante, tener un futuro para los niños, que estemos bien. Nosotros no pedimos que nos mantengan ni nada, sino que nosotros podamos trabajar, tener una vida estable.
We just want to be able to thrive, to be independent. Again, we didn't came here to get anything free from anybody. We just want to be able to work and provide the best for our children.
Solo eso. Solo pedimos estar bien, estar en un lugar seguro, que los niños estén bien, cómodos, que nosotros podamos trabajar. Sin embargo, nos dijeron que donde íbamos ahí, hasta ahí en el hotel, íbamos a tener todos los recursos y nos iban a ayudar. Y ahí ni siquiera trabajadores sociales hay. Nadie nos da una información. Solo que nosotros tenemos que hacer todo por nuestros medios.
So we just want to have stability. And again, back in Wynn Shelter, they told us that things were gonna actually be better for us once we were transferred to the hotel, that things were gonna improve for us, but it's not true. We have not even been assigned a case manager there. We have nobody to ask questions with regards of anything, you know, with anything that has to do with our case, our paperwork, immigration paperwork, anything. We feel completely lost there.
Gracias. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias. Voy a preguntarle a ella en inglés para que todo el mundo entienda, y entonces usted le responde, ella traduce. I'm gonna ask the questions in English, and then you can help translate. So have, since they've been at this new facility, have they been connected to legal services to start the paperwork for their working papers?
Desde que la trasladaron al hotel, les han conectado con algún recurso legal que les ayude a hacer seguimiento a su caso migratorio?
No.
Okay. And how long have they been at this site?
At the United States?
No, no, no. At the site where they're staying now.
¿Hace cuánto tiempo tienen en el hotel?
Un mes y diez días.
A little bit over a month now.
Has anybody told them that they would have to leave after 60 days?
¿Les han dicho que los van a transferir de nuevo después de los 60 días en este lugar?
No.
No nos dicen totalmente nada. No nos dicen totalmente nada.
They, they just, they, they don't, they don't receive any information with regards with, to anything, basically.
So that I understand there, there is absolutely no social worker on site? ¿No hay social trabajadores sociales?
No.
En realidad no hay nadie.
No, hay trabajadoras sociales. Uno pregunta y dicen que no, que hay no trabajadoras sociales, solo, eh, eh, administrador, solo eso, pero a trabajar social no hay.
¿Y en tu caso?
En el caso mío hay uno pero de vez en cuando sí.
Uh, so in Angela's case, she's saying that there's some, sometimes there is somebody there, that is called a case manager, but there is no access, no real accessibility to this person, like, it is not there all the time. And in the Beth, in the Beth case, she's saying nothing at all, there is nobody there.
Es un supervisor de lo que...
There's just supervisors there, that's, that's all.
Y ustedes, where are they located now, what borough? Eh, Brooklyn, still Brooklyn?
Still Brooklyn, yes.
Okay, they're still in Brooklyn. Um, when you say that they search you, uh, at the, at the shelter, that they go through your bags and the children's bags, is that why you're at the point of entry when you're coming into the, into the shelter or is that in your room? Cuando dices que cuando la revisan, cuando tú dices que la revisan, es cuando están llegando que la revisan los bolsas?
Sí, que lo...
O en el, o en los cuartos?
No, cuando llegamos, eh, en la, a nosotros también, nos ponen así, nos pasan un escáner o es horrible. Hay más humillante, a los niños también le ponen esas cosas.
No, yo entiendo que, eh, se, se siente humillante, eh, pero para, más que para clarificar, no defender, es, es un procedimiento que sucede en todos los, uh, shelters para su seguridad, ¿verdad? Porque queremos asegurar que alguien no entre con algún arma y le haga daño a alguien, pero se entiende, se entiende.
Yeah, but she's saying that, eh, they didn't have to go through that when they were in Wynn.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I, I was explaining that, you know, unfortunately, that's procedural, right? That we have security in the front entrances to ensure that no weapons are coming into the facilities and for everybody's safety. Um, I also understand that it feels, you know, dehumanizing and so they're saying that while they were at the Wynn Shelter, they were not subject to that, but at the HRCs they are.
Also, Angela clarified that she does get, uh, this search in the room, not only when she's...
¿En el cuarto? En el cuarto también entran y revisan, no sé, todo.
Okay, okay. Uh, me gustaría ayudarles, sí, yo creo que, did they give their phone numbers and stuff? Sí, nosotros tenemos el teléfono de ustedes o si quieren dar solo a la muchacha, yo la llamo para ver cómo podemos coordinar, para ayudarle con los servicios, um, you know, que necesitan legales para que puedan empezar el procedimiento y pueden también ayudarme a asegurar que sus compañeros donde viven también tengan esa información porque yo sé que es un proceso, se coge tiempo, pero, um, es necesario que se haga correctamente. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí.
Thank you.
Yes, I, oh, I'm sorry, espérate.
Councilmember, Hanif, did you have a question? I did. Thank you so much, Deputy Speaker Ayala, and thank you for joining us, um, this afternoon. Uh, I represent the shelters, or used to represent the shelters now, that, uh, Wynn manages in South Slope, uh, which is now represented by Councilmember Alexa Aviles. Um, I have a few questions. Could you share what information you received as you were instructed to leave the Wynn Shelter? And then my second question is, are you still in a DHS, Department of Homeless Services operated shelter? And can you discuss, um, uh, how it's been to, um, how your child's education has been either interrupted or what are the challenges now since you don't live near PS 124?
Eh, la primera pregunta es, este, eh, primero si, si tienen idea si el, el hotel donde fueron trasladados sigue siendo parte operado por DHS, ¿saben eso?
No.
They don't know about, um, if the hotel is, is also a DHS shelter?
I just wanted to get at that because I'm curious, because where they were was not under the 60-day rule. And I'm wondering if where they are right now is within the purview of the 60-day rule.
Yeah.
Do they know that?
They, they're not aware of...
They don't know if at 60 days?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you, could you say the first question again?
Uh, the information they had received when they were instructed to leave their, uh, for shelter.
Eh, lo, cuando recibieron la notificación de transferencia, qué exactamente, qué recibieron y, y cómo se los, cómo se los comunicaron?
Eh, yo llegué de trabajar ese día, eh, los de seguridad me estaban esperando en la puerta de la entrada del shelter. Me dieron una hoja que la tenía que firmar, eh, y que mañana nos íbamos, que recogiéramos todos y necesitábamos bolsas para empacar y que, y, y que nos podíamos llevar, eh, una maleta por persona.
¿Estaba en español la hoja?
No, en inglés.
So she was coming from work, uh, and there were security people waiting for her, but waiting for her at the entrance of the, of the shelter. And they just gave her, uh, a paper, uh, which was not, not in her native language. And they just told her, "You need to sign this, you're leaving tomorrow. And let me know if you need trash bags for you to put your, your stuff."
Oh, they made that ask of trash bags?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, so no, not, no translated materials about the exit plan? Um, and my understanding is that there was, there were more families that were supposed to have exited that shelter. Um, uh, could you share what that process and advocacy was like? Because I know that there was, uh, including Wynn, involved in trying to decrease the number of families exiting that shelter. Um, what kind of, um, uh, advocacy did you have to do to try to stay and why did you leave?
Eh, ellos preguntan qué, qué, qué hicieron en ese momento, qué trataron de hacer para detener, eh, eso que estaba sucediendo.
Bueno, yo, yo, a mí me hicieron firmar, sin explicarme por qué, cuándo y cómo y de qué se trataba. Como yo venía del hospital con mi niño, eh, solamente me dijo firma y a los 15 minutos ya fueron con bolsas a la, a la habitación a hacer, recoger, a hacerlo recoger. Pero, eh, nosotros tratamos de evitar con la comunidad que siempre nos apoyó y hasta ahora nos apoya, eh, Ms. Mary. Es una excelente persona, siempre ha estado frente de nosotros, apoyándonos a nosotros. Yo la agradezco mucho porque estamos pasándola muy mal. Disculpenme, nadie quiere saber, pero hoy ni he tomado un bocado de agua. Me he sentido tan mal que a veces quiero ya derumbar y dejar todo ahí por el motivo de que estuvo mal no ayudarme ahí en el, en Wynn con mis papeles porque ya había llegado mis notificaciones para yo poder hacer mi permiso de trabajo y ahora tengo muchos problemas con eso.
So in Angela's case, uh, it was about the same. She was, uh, she had mentioned before that she was coming from a doctor's appointment with her child. Uh, they, they just gave her this paper, no, uh, translation whatsoever. Uh, then she just, they made her sign the paper without explaining anything. And then 15 minutes later, they were just in her room, in her apartment, with the trash bags, telling her that she needed to, uh, get the stuff. In terms of what they did, uh, she's just referring to the, what they always do, they just, is the community who comes, uh, um, in their, in their defense. Uh, and we have a great group of parents, uh, that supports the community, uh, at PS 124, and that's who they reach out to. And then from there, we just started reaching out to your office and, um, Ms. Aviles' office and whoever could provide any support to stop the transfer of these families.
Um, I won't be here for when, uh, the administration testifies, but I would like, uh, for them to respond to, um, what the protocol is for when these transfers are taking place and why is it that, uh, these individuals, parents of children in a school community, were forced, uh, without an explanation to sign a paper that they did not understand and then offered trash bags? Um, I think that is adding to the dehumanization that, um, these newcomers are already experiencing because of the wider rhetoric that our mayor has enforced. Um, but I, I'd like to make sure that that question is responded to. And then finally, if you could just respond to the, the schooling of your children right now, what is that looking like?
Uh, lo último que ella preguntó es el impacto que ha tenido, eh, específicamente en las escuelas, o sea, en los niños, en términos, o sea, en cuanto a la escuela. ¿Cómo lo ha impactado emocionalmente el, el traslado?
El traslado nos, muy duro, muy difícil porque la escuela donde vivíamos, eh, eh, quedaba minutos, segundos cruzando la calle y de mi otro niño a, a dos cuadras a las dos avenidas. Y entonces eso nos impactó mucho porque ahora yo tengo que madrugar mucho. A veces salgo tiempo y a veces llego atrasado y no es porque yo no quiero cambiar a mis hijos de escuela, es porque mis hijos y están haciendo su vida ahí. Ellos ya hicieron, ya, ellos ya están adaptados ahí y que yo les cambie de escuela es algo duro porque si para venir a, acá a este país, adaptarse les cuesta y hasta ahora les cuesta y yo no voy a permitir quitarles eso, lo que mis hijos ya tienen formados en su escuelita, cambiarles a otro lugar no puedo. Me duele mucho verles así, no puedo cambiarlas de escuela. Como yo le dije a la directora, le dije, "Si yo tengo que madrugar desde polo a polo, no voy a retirarles a mis hijos de esa escuela porque ellos aman la escuela."
So it's been very, very hard. Um, they were, uh, one of my kids, it was literally, uh, the school is just, was just across the street and for my other child, it was just a couple of blocks away. Uh, now we have to wake up like very, very early, uh, at the commute, uh, there, it's now, uh, around 40 minutes, she was telling me, uh, from the new place they're living in. Um, and, uh, sometimes they make it on time, sometimes they don't. Uh, and, uh, they, uh, she's just not going to, uh, transfer her kids from the school because it's the, uh, what they, is a request specifically from the children. They tell her, "Mom, I, mommy, please do not, uh, change my school. I, I love my school." Uh, this, it's basically, it's become their second home, their second home. They have received so much support, uh, there that they're just not willing to give up the benefits, uh, that they, that they, uh, receive there and, um, yeah.
Thank you. I'm just grateful to hear about the work that PS 124 has done since the very, very beginning and that these children are seeing a part of our city that is truly humanizing and valuing them for what they are bringing in the classrooms and that their peers also are, um, demonstrating what inclusivity and care and compassion look like in this city. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Muchísimas gracias. No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I would not, I would now like to turn it over to our policy analysts who are in members of the administration. Sorry, I haven't acknowledged that we were also joined by Councilmembers Banks, Hanif, Russell, and Stevens.
I will now administer the oath. Administrator Carter, will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jean-Claire Carter and I serve as administrator of the New York City Department of Homeless Services. I would like to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala and the members of the Committee on General Welfare for holding today's hearing on families with children in DHS shelters. I also want to acknowledge the two moms who testified here this afternoon. Um, it's very brief to share their stories and we'll follow them after this hearing to get more information from them. At the onset, I want to reassure the council that at DHS, we recognize the vulnerability of the families we serve and understand that families experience trauma from housing instability. Our objective is to carefully and compassionately meet the full needs of the people we serve while they are in our care. That includes serving as the bridge towards connections with the resources to meet the very real psychosocial and socioemotional needs of families experiencing homelessness. We understand housing is a critical, critical part of well-being and the dangers families face in these vulnerable moments. That is precisely why we aim to craft an intake process that meets our clients where they are and nurtures onwards connections so that DHS can serve as an honorum to further social services. Our trauma-informed approach aims to treat every client with dignity that they deserve. Families come to us in a moment of crisis and we work to stabilize them quickly and move them towards permanent housing. I would like to take the opportunity to give the council and the public listening some insight into how our intake systems have developed over time and share our reasoning as why our system are the way they are. I will also offer a review of the legislative proposals with attention to fiscal, operational staffing and service process flow impacts. DHS Prevention Assistance and Temporary Housing, PATH Intake Center, is a front door to services that is sized, staffed, and designed to meet the needs of families with children. As a last resort, families that have fallen in hard times come to PATH, located at 151 East 151st Street in the Bronx. It is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Prior to the establishment of PATH, we had multiple intake centers and we found that families were spending an average of 20 hours in the, in the intake process. Today, on average, families spend six to seven hours at PATH. That is a dramatic decrease in the amount of time families are spending at intake. PATH allows us to realize economies of scale, offer wraparound services, and serve as a critical node in diversion, screening, and assessment required for placing families in shelters. We have staff at the front door and at reception that greet families as they enter the building and they require, inquire about the family's reason for coming to PATH. Families are then directed to the intake area where we have staff prepared to begin the application for shelter. During this time, discussions with clients also focuses on the needs of children within the household, including school enrollment. We explain next steps and offer families an opportunity to ask questions. When new applicants and those families reapplying after more, more than 30 days applied at PATH, they're engaged by PATH Social Services workers. These workers provide crisis counseling, mediation services, and referral to community, the community-based resources as an alternative to shelter. For those families with housing options still available in the community, PATH Social Services workers elaborate with HRA, Homeless Diversion Unit, caseworkers, and home-based officers throughout the five boroughs to put services in place to help families retain or secure independent housing without having to enter shelter. All families reapplying for shelters, falling or breaking shelter services of less than 30 days, except for those who have experienced domestic violence, are also referred to meet a resource room social services worker who then collaborates with our HDU team to further explore ways to avoid shelter entry through family mediation, legal services, HR emergency grants, and rental assistance. There is no one-size-fits-all solution for families. Their circumstances are all unique, their needs are unique, and we need to take time to listen, learn, and connect them to the resources that best serve. For instance, a family may have had a non-physical argument that could benefit from family mediation. For that family, mediation could be the course to avoid shelter altogether. We find that approximately 13% of families are diverted from shelter. If families have no alternative options immediately available such that they would qualify for homeless preventive services, they are interviewed by a DHS family worker who obtains the family's two-year housing history. This serves as a basis for determining shelter eligibility. During the interview process, families may be assigned a conditional shelter placement while DHS investigates and invest, and assesses the family's individual needs. Conditional placements last for 15 days on average. During this time, field specialists visit the homes of family and friends with whom the family previously resided to verify information provided during the interview. During the conditional placement, social services staff and social workers from DHS arrange in-person meetings whenever possible with families applying for shelter and family or friends they lived with previously to further pursue mediation and explain in greater detail available housing preventive services and rental assistance programs to return to the community. Once the investigation is completed, an eligibility determination concerning the completeness of the application and the availability of other housing is written, reviewed, and provided to the family in the shelter placement. We conduct an eligibility assessment in accordance with the New York State Social Services law and regulations from our oversight agency. We conduct an eligibility assessment in accordance with the New York State Social Services Law and Regulations from our Oversight Agency, the New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance, OTDA. PATH benefits from our co-located sister agencies who partner in delivering their insights and services. The Department of Education is represented at PATH in the form of family assistance staff who serve as a critical point of linkage with NYC schools, offering an opportunity to discuss transportation and educational needs. Administration for Children's Services staff provide collaboration and consultation as related to abuse or neglect cases, are partners from the Human Resources Administration, No Violence Again, does safety assessment for families who indicate domestic violence, have a domestic violence history, or there's suspicion of DV while at PATH. Additionally, HRA's Homebase team serves as a link to further homeless preventive services and aftercare services. There's also a medical provider on site, the Floating Hospital, and they are there to conduct health screens and other health education as necessary. With that larger context in mind, I will now turn to the legislation being heard today. Intro one-two-three would preclude DHS from requiring that every member of the family be present at its intake center when that family seeks placement in shelter. We have made accommodation for the logistical challenge of having all children under eighteen present at INTI. Currently, all adults in the family are required to appear. However, children under age eighteen cannot appear remotely for the initial visit. They are not required for any subsequent visits. We believe the system we have in place maintains the appropriate balance between the necessity of having children on screen to assess for real potential needs while offering the flexibility and recognition of the potential challenge posed to a family. For families that choose to bring their children to PATH, we have a child wait space on site with educational activities and fun games. Initially, it's designed to accommodate children whose parents were being interviewed by the Nova social workers to avoid re-traumatization. We have since expanded it to serve all children. Intro one-twenty-four would require DHS to provide process-navigated services to every family with children at an intake center. Intro four-forty would require DHS to ensure that eligibility specialists are available at every shelter to assist residents with determining eligibility for PA benefits, public assistance benefits. Intro one-two-four and four-forty focuses on roles and functions that already exist in our system. Our intake staff is trained to guide families through this process. We offer an explanation to every family that comes to us with multiple touchpoints, immediately at the front door, with greeters, at the window where registration occurs, as they exit elevators, and throughout their time in the waiting areas. Our managers, case managers, social workers, family workers, or medical provider have been charged with explaining the process and offering families the opportunity to ask questions. We structured this system of touchpoints to make sure families feel safe, secure, and deliver a consistent supportive message in the intake process. Prior to becoming the DHS administrator, I had the privilege of directly overseeing PATH. I understand the intent of intro one-two-four and the idea of adding process navigators. But I believe we are already providing that navigation over the intake process itself, and I do not believe adding another navigation layer would be advisable. With regard to the eligibility specialists in intro four-forty, at intake, we have a host of staff on site who are responsible for ensuring that family needs are met. This begins with the leadership and staff at PATH, followed by the shelter directors, directors of social services, caseworkers, housing specialists, social workers, and operation staff at shelter, who all play a constructive role in fulfilling the responsibilities of guiding clients to resources and services. We understand that shelter is temporary, and we are aiming towards housing stability in community where clients can attain their goals. Assessing, assessing exit to permanency is part of our process. One key in ensuring that this happens is ensuring that public assistance cases are open. We have staff both at the front door and at the shelter level who are already doing this work. We want to make sure applications for public assistance occur and work towards clients putting appropriate applications in. At intake, we have staff on site helping to open these cases. Furthermore, independent living plans include eligibility and applications as part of the toolkit in driving towards exit and permanent housing. Once at shelters, families meet with staff.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? This is your building fire safety director. At this time, we have completed all testing on the building's CLAZE system. Please respond to any or future alarms that you may see you hear. May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? This is your building fire safety director. At this time, we have completed all testing on the building's CLAZE system. Please respond to any and all future alarms that you may see you hear. Thank you for your cooperation.
We're good, thanks. I needed water anyway, so that's good. Once at shelters, families meet with staff to complete an independent living plan. There are then bi-weekly meetings with staff to update these ILPs. They can include procuring entitlements for families that they may be eligible for, referrals to mental health, education, or job preparation opportunities, or referrals for what are the other services that best need the meets um for clients. In addition to being a component of the ILPs, Access HRA is a tool in this process. All providers have all been trained in Access HRA. Serving as our online benefits portal, Access HRA allows clients to gain information on and apply for government programs, including cash assistance, SNAP, food stamps, fare fares, the Home Energy Assistance Program, Medicaid, City Feds, and Child Support. Because we already have this layered system in place, including contact with case managers, Access HRA ILPs, we do not believe legislating a specific title and company ratios to be appropriate. Intros four-five-three and four-sixty focus on expanding families with children intake through an additional intake center in the Bronx or Queens, and through producing a feasibility report on community-based organizations' viability for accessing and processing intake. There are manifold advantages of centralized intake. Those advantages include consistent screening of critical factors and assessment for conditions related to medical needs, mental health needs and substance use, adults on child protective services, and domestic violence. Moreover, centralization forces continuity of service by taking advantage of co-located inter-agency links. DOE, ACS, HRA Nova, HRA Homebase, as well as medical. Centralization also allows us to benefit from economies of scale in addition to cost concerns. Intake is a complex process with a host of regulatory compliance requirements, example, client privacy. Accordingly, centralizations allow us to deliver service with consistency and clear monitoring for deviation from best practice. Those advantages mean there are significant drawbacks to the proposal envisaged by intros four-five-three and four-sixty. As we discussed in twenty-twenty-three, we believe feasibility studies are prerequisite to considering an additional PATH site. Therefore, we would be supportive of moving forward with a feasibility study that encompasses the design requirements that went into PATH and that takes into account the capital cost of a building, of a new facility, location considerations, staffing requirements, and obligations to meet our federal and state legal regulatory mandates. We are working to exit families. In January, the Adams Administration launched Women Forward NYC, an action plan for gender equity, an investment aimed at making New York City a national leader on gender equity. Supported through city dollars, private and public partnerships, academic institutions, federal grant funding, this living action plan is a framework for all of the administration's effort addressing gender disparities going forward and takes immediate action to connect women into professional development and higher-paying jobs, dismantle barriers to sexual reproductive and chronic health care, reduce gender-based violence against women, and provide holistic housing services, including for formerly incarcerated women and domestic and gender-based violence survivors. Through Women Forward, the administration committed to increase families exiting shelter into permanent housing by twenty-five percent by twenty-thirty. As part of the administration's comprehensive effort to connect New Yorkers to safe, affordable homes, we are aiding New Yorkers from intake to exit to transition into permanency. We continue to focus our efforts on moving families and individuals from shelter into permanent housing as quickly as possible. This is challenging work. Our frontline staff, our sister agency partners, and the community providers are all focused on aiding families through crisis towards permanency. I would like to take this opportunity to thank them and acknowledge their successes. While we acknowledge we have further work to do in delivering the highest-quality social service to our fellow New Yorkers, we can also recognize the meaningful difference our hard work and staff and network of providers makes in the lives of children and families on a daily basis. I thank you for this opportunity to testify, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass it over to Councilmember Ang for questions first.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your testimony today. I just have a couple of questions. Um, as far as the PATH intake center for families, is there a practical reason why there is only one in the entire New York City?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. So, one of the things that's important to us is really thinking about when families come to us and the consistency of messengers, messaging that we give them. Prior to this administration, and historically, we have had, we did have intake in all the boroughs, and we found that families were spending up to twenty, you know, twenty hours waiting for intake. And we really thought about intentionality as we were thinking about how do we do intake. And so, the Bronx, we owned that land, I mean, the Bronx, it was easier to cite that. But not only that, families who come to us primarily came from the Bronx, right? And so, we really wanted to think about what would we need if I was coming as, you know, a person coming into shelter? What were the drivers of homelessness for families? We knew that we needed to have support and wraparound services. And so, we needed to be sure that we had a space that would have all the services in one place and that we would be able to have that service provided to every family in the same way. And so, we would need, you know, support services from ACS on site, we'd have medical on site, we would have children's services on site, we would have domestic violence, you know, safety on site. We also really looked at the cost factor. You know, it really was, it back in, it started in twenty-five, the building opened in twenty-eleven, you know, over sixty-five million back then to open the site. But we also really think about how do we centralize it so that the message that families get was consistent throughout and that the efficiency is economies of scale. But we do know that most families come from this neighborhood. Siting is also another opportunity, and if somebody, if we say anything that says homeless shelters, it might even is intake, we know what happens. But the message that we give is that this is the place you're gonna get wraparound services when you come through the doors to get your needs met at our front door.
No, thank you. And I actually have been to that PATH center in the Bronx.
Thank you. I'm glad that you come.
It is a very good center.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't understand what you're saying, but for families that are not from that area, like you were saying, I understand if you were from that area, it would be easier. But for the people in further boroughs who also experience homelessness, do you think the city could benefit from having a site somewhere else?
Well, one of the things that's important is that, you know, we are on a, people can get to us, right? We're certainly on a transportation get-to-us, and when you come into our front doors, there are the services that you've seen, right? You've seen the services that we do, you see that we are really looking at the entire family, the needs that, you know, and we're meeting those needs. So, getting to us, you know, we're, we're, we're in the Bronx, but we're, you know, it's not, you know, we, you can get to where we are. And the service that you're gonna get every family, as you saw, Councilmember, getting the same information, there's wraparound. You come through our doors, there's a medical provider there. So, it would not behoove us to try to be able to do the same service in a space that's retrofitted. I want to come to a building that's, right, made for the service. We built it intentionally to say when you come through, we respect you, right? And I don't want to go back to retrofitting buildings for this service. We want to be able to have wraparound services for families that says, you know, this is a space for you when you come to us.
No, I understand. So, I think, you know, I read the testimony, I heard you. So, you'll be open to a feasibility study of having another site where it could have all the services as what you were just saying, because you do want someone to go there and also have the same services, the wraparound services that right now the Bronx intake center has.
We'd be open to that, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question about working with not-for-profits. Has DHS ever partnered with not-for-profits to access shelter?
Well, I think it's important to recognize that what, what we also want to be able to do is that we, DHS, you know, city, that we do this work with consistency. When we have, and we do have, non-for-profits in our single, kind of doing that work. And we find there's disparity when one, you know, in the Brooklyn and one in the Bronx, they, it's not done consistently. Again, I do believe that we have to kind of make sure that families get the same. And I wouldn't, you know, I don't want families, if you went to one certain one and another one that is different. Again, I do believe that we have to make sure that families are getting the same service as they come through our doors.
No, consistency is great, but is there a role, and this is why, you know, I'm asking this question, is there a role that you think not-for-profits can have in helping families access services? Just because, you know, there are just some communities out there that work more with the not-for-profits, that trust the not-for-profits more. And those not-for-profits do speak the language to that community. Back to going back to, you know, going up to the Bronx, it might be difficult for some communities living some, you know, somewhere else. So, is there a path, and I recognize there needs to be some coordination, you know, obviously, between DHS and the not-for-profits. But do you see a path of where that could happen, where there can be partnerships for not-for-profits? Making sure that all the families would have as much consistent, you know, services as possible?
I mean, I think I go back to the same thing about, you know, wraparound services. I think we always want to make sure that there's the wraparound services that we put in place. I'm concerned about client privacy, I'm concerned about clients having to wait, I'm concerned about, right, you know, if I went to a particular place. I think, again, I think feasibility study is important for us to really look at, you know, before we say, yes, I'll do this, or no, I will do that. I would love to be able to do a feasibility study.
Okay, so it would be the same, like, feasibility, you see, maybe like what, you know, not-for-profits, obviously, probably people have experienced in this that, you know, that DHS and these not-for-profits could work together.
I mean, I think one of the things is to be important to think through how is there feasibility of.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you. I want to piggyback on some of the questions regarding the PATH site in the Bronx. Can you tell us, you mentioned that a large portion, a significant portion of individuals that are coming through PATH are coming from the Bronx. Do you know what the percentage of those folks are?
You know, Councilmember, I actually don't have that with me this morning, this afternoon, I have to get back to you with that.
Okay. Could you, could you also, could you provide a breakdown by borough?
I can, I can.
How many people are coming and.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree with Councilmember Ang, you know, it's very difficult, and I don't understand why, I'm not understanding how having more sites equates to more time spent.
So, can I?
Yeah.
Give you some background on that? One of the things is what, what we found, kind of what happened. So, intake, there's a lot of information that needs to happen, but there's also trying to find places, and there's competition for that also. And so, we want to make sure that A, information is shared the same, but B, we also need to make sure that if we need to find spaces that would happen for the families to go to. So, for us, it is not something that we want to be able to have families spend so many more hours waiting for placement. That's something that we have to really look at and think through. So, that's not, you know, top of mind for us at this point. So, once we do a feasibility study, we'll come back with that information.
Okay. Yeah, because I just, I'm confused about that. Assuming, you know, I don't know what the rates are, you get those numbers to us, but that, that it is true that, you know, a large percentage of folks that are coming into PATH are from the Bronx. Is DHS being proactive in terms of maybe working with the administration then to create some sort of, I don't know, public campaign to help offset the, the driving forces behind displacement of families? Like, are we adding tenant support clinics? You know, do we have Know Your Rights posters everywhere? What, what, what if anything, right? Has DHS been advocating for, to help, you know, because you have all of the data, you have all of the information. What are the driving forces, right? People are coming in for domestic violence, people are coming in because, you know, maybe they're getting displaced. People are coming in because they have no jobs and they can't afford to pay rent. Are those things that you are then tasked with bringing to the administration and saying, like, look, we're seeing that in this specific, these specifics zip codes, we have a higher need for workforce development. We have a higher work, you know, a need for tenant support services. Like, this, these, this is where we would prioritize, right, the bulk of our attention. So, you know, I mean, I would think that that's something that we would do, we were really truly intentional about driving down the numbers.
So, I can tell you that our staff at PATH have been making inroads with the schools, through some education with the, the school staff. We're having them come to make visits at PATH so they could talk with families around just kind of prevention of homelessness. We're having them do some tours. You know, we found just the other day, one of the schools, and I won't tell you which one came, and the principal himself had been homeless. And just to really talk about us being there and to go and talk with families about, you know, there was a family there and to talk about how do you. and to talk about how do you push upstream to not having to come to intake, but how do you connect to, you know, prevention in the community? And so, we're reaching out to schools to do that work in DHS. So, we're doing that with our connections in PATH and that work is happening now through our intake site and the schools in the Bronx.
Yeah, but if we don't, and I know that, I know specifically in my part of the Bronx that we have very limited resources in terms of tenant supports and legal services. If DHS has the data, right, that proves that certain neighborhoods are more impacted than others, then I would think that that's information that the administration could use to help identify new funding streams and new programs for these communities to help with those issues, right? So that we're not seeing such a large number of folks coming into the shelter system unnecessarily. We're addressing it. You know, I have a tenant support clinic in my East Harlem office and it started probably, I don't know, twenty-sixteen-ish, yeah, about twenty-sixteen. And I used to have the constituent services division and most of my cases were driven by folks that were being pushed out, you know, were losing their NICA apartment, they were, you know, being threatened by their landlord. And that tenant support clinic has really been a game changer in my district. Those are no longer, right, the concerns that I'm hearing, not that they don't, that they don't continue to exist, but not at the, at the volume that I was witnessing before that clinic, you know, was put in the district.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilmember. Love to talk with you more about that. But we will work with the local CBOs, we'll use our area in DSS to work with the CBOs, get that information out. I'd love to talk with you more about that also.
Okay, yeah. I mean, because this is kind of like the mental health debate that we have, right? People are like, well, you know, we need to have, we need to send people to, you know, their community-based clinic and there are no clinics. There are clinics, we have no psychiatrists, right? So, it's, it, you know, there has to be more, this has to be very intentional, very, very purposeful. We have to, you know, be able to identify. And again, because you're the driving force behind all of the data, then, and it's centralized within you, you know, your agency, then it makes sense to me that that information then trickle into the budget cycle and conversations around policy and expanding. You know, it's very difficult when you're like, you know, I get folks that come into my office because apparently there's an office at one oh five, it's one oh five East Sixteenth Street. I'm at one oh five East one sixteen street. That's, I think it's a SNAP office.
One oh nine East Sixteenth.
And, one oh nine, yeah. And so, people, for years, since I've worked at this office, have come to our office accidentally. I don't, at first I thought maybe that the information was wrong on the paper, but I've since concluded that people just read really quickly and they, you know, they don't, they don't realize that it's sixteenth and not one sixteen. But when they get to my office, oftentimes I hear like, oh God, I don't have any more money, I had enough to get there and back home.
Access HRA, so if they do come to your office, they could really apply an, or access HRA, the portable port, really make the application. So, that's one thing, so you actually don't have to go into an office to apply for public assistance.
Some people do because some people don't have, you know, computers, so they don't, they're not computer literate. Or they may not, you know, in my district, I have two libraries, both closed.
You come into your office.
Same time. I mean, you know, we're really not effectively, you know, gauging where the needs are going to be. But, but it is, it's a problem. And the point that I try to make is that even when you have one, when you have one site that is working, you know, well, it would be nice to have multiple sites that work just equally as well. So that folks that are already burdened, that are already going through, you know, their own psychological stress, that are now, you know, they have children, that have to carry their belongings, don't have to travel across the boroughs to get to the South Bronx to be able to see an intake worker, right? It's, it is emotionally overwhelming. And I think that it's really hard to explain it unless you've kind of lived it. You know, and I have, I did, I remember spending, you know, I don't know, must have been at least twenty-four hours at, you know, PATH at Catherine Street, when Catherine Street was, was open. And I remember somebody preparing me mentally, like, you need to go, you need to take food, you need to take water, you need to take a book, you need to take a Walkman, at the time I remember Walkmans, you know, something to entertain yourself because you're going to be there for a long time. Being there with my son was another trip, you know? He was all over the floor, he was hungry, he was tired, he was restless, he was kicking, he was crying, he wanted to go home. You know, it, it just adds layers of defeat, if you will, right, to a person's spirit. And so, you know, we're not trying to, you know, frivolously spend taxpayer dollars on things that are not necessary, but trying to make these, these services more readily available to the people that need them. And, you know, while I don't have a specific complaint about the site, I've been there several times to the Bronx, I do believe that it's, you know, really unfortunate that we're not able to recreate that same experience, at least in another borough, so that folks that are living in Southeast Queens can easily access that site if possible. So, the numbers are going to really be helpful. Now, you also mentioned that when a person is at PATH, they, in addition to, you know, to whatever other services, they also have access to HRA and SNAP, Fair Fares and all of those services? Somebody's connecting them to those?
So, we have at PATH, and thank you for your story at Catherine Street. I remember those days, Catherine Street and Kings County and really people spending multiple hours at intake, that we built to shrink that. But we have HRA Homeless Diversion Unit, as well as my resource room where we have social services worker and social workers who begin the application for public assistance.
At PATH?
At PATH. And so, we also have now, it's access HRA that we're really doing that piece upfront to really help them to open their cases while they're there. And that it, so we have that starting there at the front door. And then when they get to shelter placement, we've trained our providers to use access HRA so that can continue there. If it hadn't started there, that we're doing it on site when they get to placement. So, we're laser focused on public assistance, making sure that we have our families connected there. So, starting at the front door. And while I was there, we had started that, but now we've really ramped that up in this year to make sure that we are paying attention to get folks, PIA cases, public assistance cases open, SNAP, cash, you know, whatever they qualify for, starting at that front door.
Well, it's genius, because I mean, usually it's, you know, you, there's usually other underlying factors that are contributing to
Yes.
the situation, or programs and services that people are not aware exists that they may qualify for. Are those services also available to migrant families that are coming into PATH? I don't know if they're, if you have any more families that are coming into PATH at this point, but?
So, if asylum-seeking family comes to PATH, we do, once we realize it's an asylum-seeking family, we do transport them to the arrival center. So, if they come through our front door, once we realize that they're transported to their arrival center, so they're not processed at our intake site.
But at some point, they were, were they also beneficiaries of all of these services?
They, unfortunately, you have to have the immigration status to be able to get public assistance. So, that's not something that you're available for.
But ID NYC, you don't need citizenship for legal services, you don't need?
Yeah, on, at our site, now we don't do any processing for asylum seekers at our site at all. We do asylum, we do the, just kind of once we realize them, we're moving, transporting to arrival center.
How many sites does DHS currently operate that are for asylum-seeking families?
We opened one sixty-two and now we have one sixty? Yes, confirming one sixty.
One hundred and sixty?
Yes.
Sites, okay. So, those sites, those, I'm assuming that those residents are recipients of whatever resources are?
That DHS, that they can, that available, that they qualify for. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. You mentioned that through the Women Forward, the administration is committed to increasing families with children exiting from shelter into permanent housing by twenty, twenty-five percent by twenty thirty. Can you elaborate on how they hope to achieve this goal?
So, for DHS, this is the administration, and so for DHS, we have two initiatives. We have our Troop Six Thousand, which is our Girl Scouts.
I love them, they're so cute.
Yeah, they are cute, right? So, Girl Scouts, and so, they're doing a series of financial empowerment, you know, savings for the young ones. And so, that's part of the Women's Forward Initiative. And the second thing that we have is the pilot with New Destiny for a hundred families with domestic violence in the DHS system with NICA Section Eight vouchers. So, they have navigators to help them to exit shelters. So, navigating to help them to seek permanent housing. And so, there's lots of work happening there so that we can help them to get out. And so, that's our two part of that housing forward initiative that's happening within the administration.
Well, I would also say that you should plug in that we have, as a council, voted out a number of land use projects that would make available, set aside for homeless families. And the faster they're able to finance those, the faster you get to your goal at twenty thirty. Just saying. Regarding the asylum seekers, families with children, Documenta has reported that a number of families staying at Wynn Shelters received notices ordering them to transfer to another shelter within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Do you know anything about that and how many families in total have been asked to transfer?
So, Councilmember, since twenty-two, when the crisis started, initially because we didn't realize how big this was going to happen, we were placing asylum-seeking families into a regular system, right, just? And so, that was started. And then we started to open asylum-seeking sanctuary sites, we just started to open those. And so, since twenty-twenty-two, we have been transferring families into these particular sites, really dedicated to get, you know, pay attention and get their services less geared to that. Earlier today, Mom talked about, like, she had been in a shelter that had not happened. So, what we want to do is to have families kind of geared to that because, right, in a tier two, that's not what our expertise has been, right? We're regular tier two, that's, I mean, I work in a tier two, so that is not my expertise, I could tell you that. That's not my, we're all learning, but that's not what we're experts at. And so, we have been transferring families to that. So, I don't have a number of that, but I do know, you know, twenty-four hours is not the right time. We should really be planful and should have been a forty-eight hour, should have been in the right language, I'm not so sure what happened there. And so, that is something that we have been doing. We've talked about just making sure that we're getting these asylum-seeking families in, you know, in a place where they can get those services. I am going to follow up after this because I don't know what happened with the mom that was talking about when she gets to this place. I am going to, I was, you know, texting during that testimony, I'm like, okay, I need to follow up on that one. But this is something that we've been doing, this is not something that's been, that we started. So, I know that that didn't happen, but this is something we have been doing since we started this. But because we really wanted to get the appropriate service that's geared towards asylum seekers so that they can get, you know, what they need to do and get resettled and get their services and get their working, you know, opportunity to go to work, right? That's, that's what I want us to be able to do. So, this is something that we have been doing throughout and we have talked about this.
I mean, I'm assuming that if Wynn did this, it was under the advisement of DHS?
Pardon me, I missed your question, Councilmember.
When Wynn wouldn't just decide arbitrarily that they're going to send folks from, you know, from their site somewhere else? So, they must have been given a directive.
This is DHS, right? We, DHS, you know, Wynn is our contracted provider.
Yes.
So, we do, we are the transferring, we make the transfers, right? So, we say yes, transfer. And we should have done the forty-eight hour notice, but we have been moving families from the tier twos to really have them all in a dedicated, a site that's dedicated to get their services that they need for the asylum seekers. We've been doing that throughout our system to really have, because we now have two separate systems, right? We have the DHS Regular New Yorker System and now we have the CMT, the Crisis Management System, which is what we call it. Right? They're all under one leadership, but I have a dedicated line this way with staff. That's now, because it got so big, I didn't think we would have one hundred and sixty-two, now one hundred and sixty shelters. I never, we never thought that. And now, because it got so huge, we had to really make a whole arm that manages that. And so, that's what we were moving, you know, families to do that. We've been doing that throughout. This one, you know, twenty-four hour transfer notice is for emergencies and it wasn't an emergency. So, we will follow, you know, we have since corrected that. And so, I will follow up on what happened with this particular case.
Do you know in general how many families were asked to transfer? I mean, I'm assuming again that this is not just Wynn, that this is, that this extends far beyond.
I don't, because what, we find that, you know, we don't track it like that because if tracked by country of origin, we are concerned about privacy, right? Because if tracked by Council.
No, but I don't, I didn't ask that. I asked how many families in total have been asked to transfer? I don't, I don't.
I don't, I don't have.
And I would like to know from how many different shelters? Yeah, I don't.
I will, I will, let me get back to you on that one.
All right, okay, I appreciate that. According to DHS Asylum Seeker Census as of June second, there were eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two asylum-seeking families with children in DHS shelters, inclusive of ten thousand two hundred and thirty-nine school-aged children. How are the particular needs of asylum-seeking children, including language access, mental health support, trauma-informed care handled?
So, the educational needs, we work with Department of Education, right? And the same way that we have DOE at our, who rotate through our regular DHS shelters, we have that same connection with DOE. So, they're coming through, you know, to our asylum-seeking shelters, right? So, when we open those shelters, DOE does get a fee that we've opened those shelters and then they are coming on site to really make that, those connections for school. There are interpreters available. We are at our, in, at our asylum-seeking sites. If there's no language, people don't seem to speak language, we are really pushing to make sure that we have people who speak the language on site at these shelters. And we have done pretty good and, you know, good enough, on making sure that we have the language access. But we do use language, language line if needed, we have ASL if needed. I know, you know, wait time for language access is about eight seconds, we found in twenty-twenty-three, so there's no real wait for that at this point. So, and we can referrals, H and H, do we use H and H's system to refer if we need to? And so, we've made it, you know, support for all of our families, not just in the asylum-seeking part of our system, but in our entire system.
Okay. Now, you reminded me, I would really appreciate it when you were looking into the twenty-four hour issue where folks were being transferred out, if whatever documentation they filled out was in their native language. Because I don't want to have to, I would love to get to the bottom of that without having to foil that because I find that highly problematic that folks are, if in fact, they are being provided with documents that are not in their native language and they're signing stuff, that essentially gives away their rights. They need to know that. And, you know, there's no excuse for not ensuring that that's the case. So, if you could just add that to, to the list of things that you're going to get back.
Yeah, let me just say that we, DHS, and we have twelve languages, right? So, we should be making sure and we'll follow up also, Councilmember, that we're using, that we're making sure that we're giving forms in the language of people's choice. And so, absolutely we'll follow up on that one.
Look, I think you guys are, you guys have done the best that you can. However, I do think that, you know, when history retells a story, that, you know, we're not going to be in the best position to be able to explain away how we displaced, you know, so many children who came in here innocently without consenting, without, you know, so much as, you know, saying a word, you know, giving any consent. And we are taking them, and this is my, this is, and you know, and again, it's not a critique of DHS because I understand that you also have to follow rules that are set by, you know, individuals that have no lived experience with, you know, any of this. The fact that we're moving families with children out of settings that would allow them a level of stability and then moving them into, you know, inappropriate, I would say, settings in hotels and, you know, Herx, where they're now subject to, you know, thirty and sixty day so that we're bypassing our right to shelter laws is, to me, problematic. And I, I just, I feel really badly for these children because I believe her when she says to me that the children are getting sick off of the food. I believe that, I've seen it, I've seen people come and testify before hearings in the past few months where, I mean, I had a gentleman come and bring me breakfast, his breakfast consisted of a yogurt with raisins. So, you know, I've learned to ask more detailed questions because when I ask, you know, are people being fed and I'm told, yeah, they're given, they're provided with breakfast, lunch and dinner, it never occurred to me to ask, well, is it the dinner that they're being provided? It never occurred to me to ask, well, is it the dinner that they're being provided the same day after day? Is it culturally relevant? Is it warm enough? Has, has anybody checked into it so that it was, it didn't expire? And these are real things that people are living through, right? And then we are seeing also as a result of that, that people are, were not eating, not getting enough nutritional, you know, contents of, you know, food throughout the day. But then there's also a lot of waste, right? Because folks are refusing to eat the food. And I have, I have a mother that sits in front of a store every day with her children and refuses. She says that the last time she had, she ended up in the emergency room with her son with food poisoning. And so she sits in front of the dollar store and she, you know, begs people for not money, but for food for her kids. And, and that's heartbreaking because if she was the exception and not the rule, then I, you know, it's sad. But the fact that she is part of the rule is, is to me an indication of how badly we're, you know, failing these, these children. And regardless of whatever people may think of the adults that are making the decisions and are, you know, migrating here for whatever their own personal reasons are, these children are innocent and, and they are being, you know, re-traumatized every single time that we have, that we're forcing them to leave a school, every single time that we're forcing them to leave a place that they now call home, every single time that they think that they're gonna have to sleep on the street because they don't have anywhere else to go because nobody did their due diligence to ensure that they had a place to go and just assumed that they may. So now they have to continuously rotate through the system. I don't, I can't justify that. And, and, and I just have to say that because I don't, you know, I, I like, I want to be able to sleep at night and not feel like I was complicit in a system that allowed these injustices to happen. I'm a mother. My mother struggled with us as we were, you know, growing up. We were, you know, very poor. We were in shelter. The tier two that we lived in is on Houston and Columbia, still there. We moved in when it was brand new. And I remember what that felt like as a child. And I just, you know, whatever the politics and the reasoning and the money and there's no justification for putting young children out on the street. You know, and even in the adults, with the adult migrants, I get it. It's a, you know, we may look at that a little bit differently. But I worked with a migrant, you know, with, with two migrant young men and it took me months to be able to get them an ID, to be able to get them an attorney that they could see so that they can start their paperwork, so that they can get their working papers. So it's a process that should be started on day one, right? So that then we're at least ensuring that they're exiting with the resources that they need to be successful in that journey, right, that we keep hearing about. So, you know, I just, I had to say that, I'm sorry that I'm regurgitating that on you.
I know, you said a lot, but could I just?
Yeah, no, I know.
I, I, you know, I, I think there's, I mean, one of the things that's important to me, and I, I like you, was, was very poor and was this short, lived tripled up my mom with, with DV and was, you know, on the ledge of, of coming into shelter, but my, my aunt saved us. So I, you know, I, I feel that I do this work because I connect with the humans that we work for. So I, you know, I understand where you're coming from and I understand that piece of it. I understand how hard it is to work in this space. And so we, and, and under my leadership, and I've been here for a long time, right? So this is my 23rd year sitting in DHS, right? So I stay because I love the work that I do and want to work, you know, my folks hear me talk about raising the bar in services. And so one of the things that's important to know is that we're really, and, and the food issue, really focused on how do we, how do we, what do we need to do about food and really focused on that. We have a nutritionist and my medical director who we're really paying attention to, you know, looking at that food and the food service and what we need to do that. So that's something that we're working on. I'm aware of that and we had a whole meeting yesterday in thinking about that. So we're working on that. In terms of, you know, the DHS and the 60-day rule, that is not, we're evaluating that that's not something that's happening here. And so those families were, are not going to be moved or transferred within DHS. We want, on the beginning, whether it's DHS systems or asylum system within DHS, to be thinking about exits, exit strategy. We want to be thinking about asylum seekers, how do we get them their legal services so they can actually get to work and not depend on, you know, the system. I heard the mom say, we just want to work, right? I'm an immigrant. My mom came, you know, illegally, right? That she just wanted to work, so I understand that. She just wanted to work. So for me, it's trying to figure out how do we just get them to work and how do we get the services? Not to sit in a tier two for a year and a half and not to get those services met. But how do we really help people when they come here? Children who come through not, no fault of their own. Me who was saved through no fault of my own because domestic violence, right? And I was saved, nobody saved those children, right? That's, that's our job to do that. And I want to make sure we get, you know, get, get those services so children can be saved too. So we're on the same page. And so, you know, we are systematically, you know, there's, like I said earlier, there's more work for us to do, but we're striving to get there, right? So it, and it may seem that, you know, we're taking little steps, or we are taking little steps. And we're thinking about ways to make it a little bit better every single day. And, right, so I, I will make, you know, look at what happened, notices need to be, right? In the language that people speaking, I mean, I, I speak English barely sometimes. People hardly understand me because of my accent, so I know. People who don't speak English, it's even harder, right? So I understand, we need to make sure that we're sharing information in a way people speak in, that they understand what we're saying to them and that we get their needs met. So you and I are on the same page and so we'll listen more afterwards.
I appreciate that. Could you just tell me what, I mean, I think you heard also testimony from the young women about the, the, the transfer situation in schools and how difficult that is? And actually, the mother that I, I was referencing to that sits in front of the dollar store, you know, she says that her kids have transferred out of school at least three times, you know, in the, in, in this school year. And it's been horrible for them because they have friends in school. They have teachers that they learn to care for and then they have to leave those environments as well. So what kind of coordination is taking place between DHS and the DOE in advance of these types of shelter transfers and, and shelter closings to ensure that children are missing school days or having to transfer to a new school, for example, in May or June? And similarly, when DHS intends to close a shelter, why can't DHS wait until the end of the school year to do so in order to not cause the children to be absent from school, transfer out mid-year?
So for children, we, when there, when there's a need to transfer, typically, we're trying to transfer within the borough of where the children go to school. The parents have the choice whether or not they're going to transfer their children. Most, you know, if they choose not to, they don't have to. And then the DOE and Office of People Transportation to do busing for the younger ones. As mu, as much as we can, if we have to close a shelter, a hotel, because for a variety of reasons, sometimes the hotel wants us to leave and they may want just to leave and don't want us to stay until the end of the school year, right? There's just some reality, they want us to leave now. As much as we can, if they want us to leave, we're, we're trying to push to the end of the school year, end of June to do that, to make that a seamless closing as much as possible. There are times when that doesn't happen, but we do coordinate. DOE coordinates with the family to let them, you know, have that opportunity to make that choice. If they need, you know, but we're trying to transfer within the borough where the child does go to school. So that is something that we try to do, they don't have to leave the borough of the youngest child school.
Yeah, I mean, it's still happening though. And what, what do you mean if a, if a hotel asks DHS to exit? Are in their contracts that are signed for a specific amount of time?
Sometimes.
It sounds very spontaneous.
Sometimes there's a, a reason, the hotel may not want to extend the contract, some, right? It, you know, contract ends, they decide that they could do better business than us.
I mean, hopefully you don't, we're not entering into many more contracts, but in the.
Hopefully not.
We've learned to maybe, when there are families with children, to extend them through the end of June.
Until the end of June, yes. Hopefully we can get real tier twos and we can get open sites and not have to use hotels. So hope, you know, I'm hopeful that we can get tier twos because, you know, we don't want to have to use hotels. And in this, you know, surge that has happened, right? We've had to open hotels, which we, we, you know, we were very excited when we didn't have to, but right now we do.
I get that. So the, I'm gonna move on to PATH intake shelters. So the eligibility rate at PATH for families with children or the proportion of families with children applicants found eligible has consistently been under 60% since 2017. Do you know the main reason for denial or why families with children were found ineligible in fiscal years 23 and 24?
Primarily, families, you know, it is for us and it's because of the state law. We, we follow the state regulation, regulatory compliance, comply with them. Families have to cooperate with the investigation. There may be another housing option. A lot, sometimes it is because primarily those are the two reasons why families are found ineligible. Didn't cooperate with the housing, with the investigation or there's another housing options. Those are the two reasons why folks are found ineligible.
And who determines that the, that the housing option is viable?
So let me just kind of take a step back and kind of walk you through the process a little bit. When families are placed in the conditional placement, they have met with a family worker and they do present a two-year housing history. Or field specialists do meet with the place, with the friends and families they have resided with. They do go to the homes, they do meet and they do investigate, they do go to the houses. And if there's adequate space and there's no domestic violence and there's no risk of violence in the home, they could be a viable housing option, right? It is space and safety, then it's viable.
And does DHS work with, let's say you find somebody ineligible, you send them back to maybe their mother's house? They obviously, maybe they're overcrowded, maybe there are other issues in the household. Does DHS then refer that individual to another program that can help identify housing?
If it's overcrowded and it doesn't meet this, the, if it, if it's overcrowded and we determine it's overcrowded and we're not going to, it's not going to be viable. Right? So our field specialists follow the regulations of what OTDA says is, is, is overcrowded standards, right? So if it's overcrowded and it's standards of what overcrowded is, then it's not viable. So there are standards that we do follow based on what the regs say. And those are the term, those make the determinations for viable or not viable.
All right.
If there's domestic violence in the home, if there's family violence in the home, intimate partner violence in the home, they're not, those housing options are not viable, they're not suitable.
Okay, so regarding the, you mentioned the two-year look back at, at previous housing. What support is provided to applicants in obtaining, you know, the evidence that they need specifically as for people who may have difficulty getting acceptable proof or such as those who were previously unsheltered?
The, our staff do help with that as well as if you're unsheltered. We do get, we, we will talk to, if they're unsheltered on the street, we'll talk to store, storekeepers. Our outreach teams can verify that a person was unsheltered on the street. That's typically on the fam, on the adult family side. Families are not, we, we don't see families with children unsheltered on the street. That's not something, we, we, we don't see that. I could say that in my time at PATH or even here, that that's something that we're seeing, unsheltered families on the street. But our field specialists and my sta, the staff at PATH do help with that. That's one of the things that we're charged with to really help support. If a family has been in the hospital and they're missing time, we, we do find, we're supposed to help to do that. We just can't say it's on you and you don't do it. We're supposed to help the family with that information to help to get the two-year housing.
So recently I learned that there was a pilot program at some, I don't know, maybe nine shelters that would pay $4,000 to migrant families that could, that maybe have family in Texas, if they could relocate there. And then there was some other mon, I think it was like a gift card or something like that, that they would be provided. When, assuming that a family receives, you know, that payout and they leave the system and they go to Texas and it doesn't work out and then they end up back in New York City, are they no longer eligible for?
We can't turn your way. You're talking about this asylum move-out assistance pilot?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, if we, if we help you through that pilot and you move out, we hope you do not return. But if you return, I'm not gonna say to you, Johnson and Carter, you, you know, you gave you and you can't come in, right? We have to honor that person's, if they need a unit, need a bed, right?
Okay. And I'll just go through this really quickly because I know we want to get you out of here. But PATH clients, they can request a fair hearing if they feel that they've been unfairly denied. How many fair hearings were held in 23, in fiscal year 23 and 24? And what were the outcomes of these hearings?
So one, one of the things is that we get our results from OTDA for fair hearings. Unfortunately, they don't break it out by families with children, single adults, or adult families. I don't have families with children by itself. And I don't know if I could parse that out because it's come from OTDA. So I don't have families with children fair hearing information because OTDA just sends us, the state does our fair hearings. So I don't have the families with children fair hearing results.
So you, you know the amount of hearings that were held, but you don't, you can't make the distinction of whether or not.
Families, which ones are families with children?
All right. Do you know how many fair hearings were held in general?
I don't have that.
Okay, can you get that to us? Reporting from the Institute of Children and Poverty and Homelessness on PATH intake processes noted that anecdotally, client characteristics such as English proficiency, assertiveness, and educational level play a role in eligibility determinations. What training is given to DHS staff undertaking these investigations to ensure that all clients are receiving the same level of clarity, information, and support? And what training is provided to ensure that staff avoid unconscious bias?
So we believe, I'm strongly in trauma-informed care, right? And making sure that we're being the family where they are. That's important to me, you know, I, I always see myself in these families. And so we train staff. We have monthly training with all of our staff. We have monthly training in how we're engaging families. We have, you know, it's from top down, every person are in those trainings, recognizing unconscious bias. We have our, from our training area, Training Department, we have training happens at PATH and then I have a training at DSS, Department of Social Services area that does training. So they're doing training for us also, just to make sure that we have staff that's aware of what's happening for themselves. So that's, that does happen at DSS, the, the entire agency.
Is there a place where folks can make a complaint? If they feel like they've been mistreated or? I mean, I, I think, I, I, I don't know how you do it because, you know, doing, providing social services is very difficult and the burnout rate is really high, you know, usually. At DSS and DHS, you know, the retention rates are pretty high. Most folks that I speak to have been there for over 20 years, which is unheard of. But I have witnessed interactions, right, between some workers and clients that are a bit harsh, right? And I think that with time, people become desensitized. And so we want to make sure that that's not happening or that at least we're recognizing it when it does and allowing that individual, you know, an opportunity to kind of reassess whether or not this is something that they want to continue to do. Is that part of the training?
It is, but let me just step back a little bit. That's, that's, um, one of the things that's important for us is thinking about staff also. So when I, when I got to PATH and, you know, I'm gonna just kind of talk about myself a little bit. When I got to PATH, the folks on, because our folks stay, like you said. Our, our folks on the frontline had been there for a long time. And so one of the things that I started to institute was pulling them off the frontline and having them come upstairs for some training and have managers work that frontline, right? To give them opportunity to kind of talk about what's happening for them because what I always say to them is that recognize where clients are coming from. You know, what's happening with them and what they're giving to you is not, don't take it personally. They've been through trauma, right? And so, and so you're getting secondary trauma, so what happens to you? So then I, so what I have now and I was, I am still a licensed social worker, is having the personnel who's in charge, first it was Ms. White who was also licensed and now, putting a social worker in that role prior to me was an attorney, nothing against attorneys, but. Right, but, you know, we want to put people who have some kind of, you know, clinical training so pull folks off the line and have them kind of talk about how they're feeling, right? And we're always thinking about families and who's coming in, but, right? So what we do now is pull folks off so that we can actually hear how they're doing because we want to also recognize how hard this job is, right? This is a hard job. And so that is happening, right? So that's, that's one of the things. But you asked me about complaints at PATH. So we do have a dedicated complaint line that clients can call that we have posted up. Then if, if clients call 311 and talk about how bad we're doing at PATH, hopefully they don't do that. But if they do, we get routed to the same complaint line, then they're sizable, right? So there's multiple ways that, that our, our clients or families can complain and can leave kind of hopefully good things about us too, and it's addressed. Depending on the severity of what the complaint is, really depends, it, it really will tell us who is going to respond to that. So it, that, those numbers are posted up. So we want to make sure that we get an opportunity. On the floors at PATH now, we have, as you come off the elevators, those, those, you have been there. So when you come off those, those, you know, counters are staffed now, right? So we want people, when they come out, to have somebody to talk to. I'm now making sure people on those floors, asking questions, getting, people getting their answers met, their questions answered. And if there's something happening, they can find the person to talk to so that they don't leave, we don't have any answers, the question is answered. And so there are multiple places, multiple touchpoints that we put in place now. And we, you know, sometimes we don't do it right, but I want to make sure that if we know, that we can, you know, fix it. And so we have posted the, the numbers up, staff is on the floor. I don't want staff just in offices. I don't want staff just in offices, I don't want the seventh floor with people, I want people downstairs on the floors, right? Just kind of roaming the building. So that's how we're changing the culture there. But I also want to recognize how hard the job is. You know, we stay and we stay because we love the job, right? People who come in, I always say, you choose to work here, I love you, but you choose to work here because there's something about you. And that's why, you know, our staff stay.
Certainly not for the money.
Certainly not for the money. Right about that, but.
No, it's, it's, it's an, it's an important assessment that has to be made. I, I go through this with, with my staff all of the time too. Because we, you know, we get people that come in and sometimes they're, you know, they're down on their luck or they're just like, you know. And we're human beings, like I, you know, I already, I know when I'm ready to step away for a little while because, you know, I get crankier and my fuse is a little bit, you know, shorter. But it's, it's important to kind of be able to kind of regulate yourself and to check yourself, right? And, and, and I'd be able to identify like, okay, I need a moment here, I need a, I need a break, right? Because I'm, I'm worn out and I no longer care. And at that moment, you're not helpful to yourself, the agency or the people that you're representing. My final two questions are regarding the reporting of, so City Limits in May reported that over 50% of shelter exits were, are marked as unknown in DHS's system. Can you tell us what measures DHS has taken to capture exit outcome from families with children leaving the shelter? What outreach is done to stay connected with those families who are formerly in the shelter system?
The families, as they exit shelter, and most of our exits that we, we, that, that we want to happen with subsidies, right? Because those are the ones that we find that stick. When, when families leave with a subsidy, they don't return to us. The return rate is .6. And so they stay out longer. Those are the ones that we're pushing, some people may stay a little bit longer in shelter because they really need to get themselves much more stable before, before they leave. Some families come in and leave, just, you know, they come in and leave. And that's really, they make their own arrangements. We don't track those families. We really track families who come because, you know, if I decide I'm going to leave, I don't want people just kind of, you know, I've decided I'm not going to stay, this is not the place for me. And I think people have a right to self-determination if they decided that I don't want shelter. And so even if, we used to have an aftercare program early on in, in my career here. And when you call, people are like, "Why are you calling me?" Right, so I want nothing else to do with you. But when people make their own arrangements, but for permanent shelter exits, which are up this year more already, more than they were last fiscal year, they're the ones that's sticking and those are the ones that people are moving to permanency and those are the ones that we want to have happen. Those who come through, front door, develop an exit strategy with our staff, get their vouchers in hand quick, enhanced quickly, which we've made a lot of changes to make sure that happens quickly. Get our processing in place, get a key, move home, not to permanency when I speak to families. Because I never say I'm moving to permanency, I always say I'm moving home. And then they stay because they actually move with a voucher. Those are the ones that we want to see. You know, those who make their own arrangements, decide I'm wanting to go live with a family or whatever else, I don't track, I don't track them afterwards.
But 50% is a pretty big number, right? And I, I, I mean, I would imagine that people are not just walking out like, "Hey, peace." You know, like they're saying to somebody, "I'm leaving, I'm, you know, I'm not going to live here anymore." And that that somebody's asking, you know, maybe congratulating them or saying, you know, "Are you sure?" Or, you know, "Where are you going?" So that folks have an understanding of whether they're leaving because they found something on their own, because they've decided to go back to wherever they came from, because they got tired of waiting, you know, and just decided it wasn't in their best interest. I think that information is helpful.
Yeah, hold on. Could, I would have to follow up on that one, council member.
Okay, yeah. And then I, okay, the, the last question. So that same City Limits report noted that only 38% of exiting families with children secured permanent housing with a rental voucher. Do you have any insight into why so few families with children are succeeding in utilizing rental vouchers to leave shelter and enter the private market and what can be done to increase this number?
Well, what I would say to that is families exit with multiple means from shelter, right? So not necessarily just a voucher. We have families who exit using NICA, HPD, supportive housing, right? It's a variety of, of exiting. One size does not fit all in terms of how family leaves us. So I think that, and I haven't read City Limits, I'm not so sure, that's why I'm looking at my folks, I'm not so sure about this. But I do know that it's not just vouchers that do, the, that families leave us. So there's a variety of means that, that families are leaving. So if the City Limits, and I have to read it, you know, to be truthful, I do know that families leave with multiple ways to exit shelter. So we have families that are leaving, right? We have, you know, at this point, over 50, almost 5,700 families who have left, which is much more than we have done in the last fiscal year. So they're leaving, right? So if it's 38% or whatever the numbers are, I know, I know that they're using a different, different means to exit. So I don't want us to think that every family is using just this one particular means to leave our system. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a variety of, of ways that they are leaving shelter to permanency, to go home.
So if 30, because I, then if my math is correct, that 38% is leaving, of families are leaving with a rental voucher, 50%, we don't know where they went. So then that leaves 12% that would have potentially left to a supportive housing unit or something.
I, I have the numbers, I just have to find them, you give me a minute.
Sure.
Okay. So, so far through April, I have 2129 non-HPD city feps, 2,039 HPD, 473 NICA, 242 supportive housing and 768 all others, could be Soder or, or on their own. So, so far through March, 5651 subsidized exits with children. So over almost 5,700 so far exits, families with children. Compared to 4986 for the same period through FY '23, so families are exiting.
Good, that's good.
And, and, you know, we also have to mention that we're competing with a 1.4% vacancy rate in New York City. So, right, we're getting, we're getting families.
We can make that push to the administration to put all of those housing units that we've already voted for that would be exited.
So we are, we're getting, we're, we're moving, we're pushing, we're pushing to get families to exit. That is our, you know, one thing that we absolutely have to make sure that as families enter our doors, exit strategies are being developed with the families, so you could see that.
I appreciate that and I, I appreciate, sorry, I spilled a little bit of water here. I appreciate, you know, all of the work. I know that it's, it isn't easy and any, you know, I, I, we will review your feedback on some of the, the bills. And then I, I guess, you know, we can work through them and try to get to a place where we build some, some consensus here. And any, any way that we could also be helpful, you know, you know where to find us.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now be moving over to public testimony if you give me a two-minute break. Okay, I now open the hearing for additional public testimony and I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony may be submitted, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant of Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant of Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topics. If you have written state, written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant of Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov or other email addresses that you, you know, minds or the, the general welfare staff within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. We will now call the first panel. Will Watts, Deborah Berkman and Dr. Rivera. Okay. You may begin, whichever one of you wants to go first.
Thank you Chair Diana Ayala and the members of the General Welfare Committee for this opportunity to testify at today's hearing. I'm Dr. Zaleks Rivera, also known as Dr. X, it's easier, right? Chief Program Officer at Housing Solutions of New York. Housing Solution of New York is committed to ending homelessness in New York City. We accomplish our mission by delivering essential support services as well as creating holistic paths to employment and stabilize, and stability so that individuals and families experiencing homelessness can secure and retain safe, clean, affordable, permanent housing. HSNY offers emergency transitional housing and support services with over 20 facilities in New York City through, through Department of Homeland Services. In FY '23, 75% of my facilities, 15 out of 20, are emergency housing facilities that service families with children, which are mostly headed by single women. 13 of these family with children facilities are located in the Bronx and two are located in Queens. In the last year, HSNY has serviced 1,050 families with emergency housing and support. We would like to thank Speaker Adrian Adams and the members of the City Council for their relentless advocacy in efforts to support unhoused New Yorkers. The recent increase in families living in shelter is due largely to the current asylum seeker crisis, which HSNY did partner with the city to address. HSNY has provided shelter for over 3,000 migrants with partnering to open five commercial hotels and working to transfer over to Tier Two facilities. To this day, two of the Brooklyn sites have transitioned fully to sanctuary sites with a continuing effort to provide resources for the new New Yorkers. Included in this number is over 200 families with children in areas that require two fair zones. Before I run out of time, I do want to indicate that we are in support of Intro 123, Intro 124 and Intro 440, emphasizing the intro to 125. We do agree that the trauma that is imposed at the PATH Center does have a lasting ripple effect when they enter the shelter system and there should be a better way to streamline these services. A lot of the stuff that they collect in PATH, we, we're not necessarily privy to. And so it does delay our ability to then service them when they come on site. I also want to indicate that we at HSNY offer culturally sensitive food options to our asylees by our food and nutrition program offering pantry bags. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Should I wait until the, the clock starts? Good afternoon, Deputy Speaker Ayala, council members and staff, and thank you so much for the opportunity to submit this testimony. NILEA overwhelmingly supports all of the bills on today's agenda. And I've written, I'm, submitted written testimony expanding on that support. But right now I want to focus on the experience of my new immigrant clients in DHS shelter. First of all, I want to thank you for all of the questions that you asked Administrator Carter about the food, about the eligibility process, all of that is really important. But I want to note that when new immigrants are sorted into the DHS shelter system, they are overwhelmingly placed in DHS emergency sanctuary site shelters. And while these shelters are operated by DHS, they lack the supports and resources of the traditional DHS family shelters that non-new immigrants are placed into. We've heard so many stories from our clients that highlight the way that these emergency sanctuary site shelters are deficient. Many clients are not able to enroll their children in school and haven't received shelf and help or guidance from the shelter staff because there's, they don't have a caseworker. I have several clients who don't have enough beds to accommodate all the family members in their family. In fact, one NILEA client family has seven families in a room with only two double beds. And one of the biggest challenges that our clients in the emergency sanctuary site shelters report is that their children can't eat the meals provided. And I was so happy to hear that you have culturally appropriate and culturally sensitive food because that's such an important thing. But also, clients have reported being given food that is still frozen or has visible mold, only being served cold foods or being served the same meal several times per day. The majority of our new immigrant clients report that their children experience gastrointestinal distress when they eat the provided meals, which has led to the children losing weight, experiencing lightheadedness, headaches and fatigue. Our team has worked with many families whose children are under close medical evaluation due to the symptoms they experience as a result of the food they're provided. Two more points. It's very difficult for families when children have a medical need that has dietary restrictions to obtain a reasonable accommodation, especially when the accommodation needed is access to a kitchen. And particularly with clients who have children on the autism spectrum disorder, who have problems with certain textures, that's a huge challenge for them. I also wanted to note that a lot of our clients report to us that they have been subject to racist and xenophobic comments and behaviors directed to them by shelter staff. And I've written more about that in my testimony. But our request is that DHS sanctuary sites be funded and supported at the same level of all other families with children sites and that staff at DHS emergency sanctuary sites undergo cultural competency training to ensure that our new neighbors are able to have a safe environment to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's a really good point. And I appreciate all of the work that you do and thank you so much for, you know, for the food. It's been, it's been an issue and I, and I, you know, I hear it from, sometimes from even some of my colleagues, you know, "Have you seen how many, you know, how much food is being thrown, you know, thrown away in the garbage?" And I'm like, "Have you eaten the same food every day for three months?" I mean, I always remember, this is a funny story, but it's, I, when I was in elementary school, they used to serve, there was this fish, I don't know if any of you went to a public elementary school where they served this fish that had like a layer of cheese underneath it? Oh my God, it was so good, it was the bomb. And when I went to junior high school, we weren't, you know, they didn't have that, they had hamburger every day. So the kids would go across the street because we could go to the Chinese, you know, spa, they sell these little dollar rice boxes. So I'm aging myself. And, or we could go to the pizzeria. When we got to high school, we couldn't go outside, so we had to eat the food inside. And they, I went in the first day, they had that cheese, the fish cheese. And I said, "Oh my God, thank goodness, I haven't seen..." Day one I had it, day two I had it, by day three I was done with the fish. I was like, "Is this every day?" Like, it was that or peanut butter and jelly sandwich. And, you know, so I, I get it, right? And it almost feels like because, you know, because we're poor or because we're coming from a certain community, we should be grateful that we have something, you know, to eat in the first place. And it's just so, you know, it's just wrong, it's wrong. And I don't want to be in the wrong part, you know, side of history, when, you know, this, this story is told about how we handle the situation. So I really do appreciate your taking the time to recognize that and make those changes. Because, you know, it, it does make a difference. Thank you, thank you. All right, the next panel is Will, is Will Watts here? Will, there you go. Catherine Trapani and Maya Yasinca. I think you guys don't want to call people anymore so that you don't give me the bad name. I mess up everybody's name.
I feel like ladies should go first. My mom and dad would be very upset with me if I didn't say that.
I always defer to the council's order, but I appreciate it, Will. Thank you, thank you, Chair Ayala, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Catherine Trapani, and I'm the Assistant Vice President for Public Policy at Volunteers of America. We operate five family shelters in the traditional DHS system that serve, I think, 430 families and an additional 244 families in the specialized DHS Sanctuary System. I have submitted written testimony that's much more detailed, but I want to talk a little bit about family intake. About 20% of the families in our DHS shelters are in conditional status at any given time. We find the intake process to be very arduous. It was interesting that they said it was faster. Our experience is that our, our families have to reapply multiple times. We've had some people in conditional status for up to six months, diverting our shelter staff that's supposed to be helping them with permanency to simply establish their eligibility before they're even allowed to begin the path to permanency. So as you're aware, you're not eligible for CityFAPs or any other rental assistance until you're found eligible. So we have people that are warehoused, going back and forth to PATH on this vicious circle for months on end, trying to establish their eligibility. So I want to really thank the council for your attention to the crisis at intake and all of the bills that you've introduced to make it a much more client-centered process. One word of caution about your bill that would allow children not to be present with the household at PATH. We have a parent that was in our care who sent her children to school. She had no working phone, because she's very low income, when she reapplied to PATH. The process took so many hours that she was unable to pick her children up from school. Our shelter staff knew this mom, and we picked her kids up for her and desperately tried to reach her at the PATH Center to make sure everything was okay. We called all four numbers that PATH had relentlessly for hours, couldn't reach her, she couldn't reach us. Shift changed, we fed her kids dinner, we took them upstairs. It was after midnight, we finally had to, we're mandatory reporters, and had to call ACS and Children's Services, because there was nothing we can do, and they removed the children for that night. And when she got off the bus, an hour later, at 1:00 in the morning, to return to her conditional placement with us, her kids were already gone. So I would strongly encourage, and I know I'm over time, but to please prioritize the other reforms to get that, that intake system tight and efficient before, you know, I could not in good conscience tell a parent to separate from their children unless they had ironclad childcare, just because of that.
I think that...
Excuse me, your microphone is on. If you could just please mute yourself.
I think that the intent of the bill is to kind of give parents an option, so that they're not, they don't feel like they are forced to bring in their children, and if they have, you know, a family member that can, can stay with the children while they're going through that process, then it's a better alternative than dragging children into the site. But I, I get that, thank you.
Yeah, so more detail is in my testimony. I realize I'm over time, but one other note on the other bill that's regarding services Intro 440 that will require eligibility specialists, I just want to caution the council on trying to legislate program budgets outside of the budget process, because what we often find is that it's an unfunded mandate. And so if we were forced to implement this without new dollars, we would just wind up pulling a case manager off to satisfy this requirement. It's actually a net reduction in holistic services, so that would just sort of be an issue. But more details in my written, I'm always happy to talk to you and members of your staff, and I really appreciate your advocacy.
We'll make sure to share that with the sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Ayala, and thank you to the committee and to you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Maya Yasinka, and I'm the Manager of Policy and Advocacy at Wynn, the city's largest provider of shelter and supportive housing to families or children.
I can hear you, but is your mic on?
It's on, just put it closer, please.
It is?
Can you hear me?
There you go, yeah.
We operate 16 shelters and nearly 500 units of supportive housing across the five boroughs, and last night, just under 7,000 people called Wynn home, including over 3,600 children. Improving the intake experience at PATH is a top policy priority for Wynn families, according to a recent client survey. Wynn families report that the process of applying for shelter at PATH is confusing and grueling, and that workers are insensitive and dehumanizing towards families. And there's more, like, actual client quotes in my written testimony. Worse, far too many families are found ineligible for shelter the first time they apply, unnecessarily forcing them to miss days of school and work. As one Wynn parent told us, you can't keep a job if you keep on going back and forth to PATH. Experiencing homelessness is inherently traumatic, and entering the shelter system should not compound whatever trauma a family has already suffered. We seek policy solutions that simplify the process for a family to prove they need shelter and reduce erroneous denials. For example, council should preclude DHS from requiring the presence of children at intake and reduce the housing history requirement from two years to one year. Council should also pass legislation to make the experience of being at PATH less confusing and more humane, such as opening intake sites in more boroughs, hiring navigators who clarify PATH procedures, training PATH employees in trauma-informed care, and creating appointments to reduce wait times at PATH, which would also help with what Catherine testified too. Finally, council can pass measures to improve the shelter experience for families with children, such as requiring public assistance eligibility specialists at shelters, and fully funding and implementing Local Law 35, so that families in shelter have the mental health services they need. Council should not neglect the opportunity to transform PATH into a tool for advancing the citywide goal of ending family homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Ayala and other members of, of course, the council, for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Will Watts, and I'm here on behalf of the Coalition for the Homeless and our Council Legal Aid Society. With shelter eligibility rates constantly hovering around 40% for families with children, the ability to access shelter continues to be one of our top concerns. Take, for instance, Lisa and her two children who entered a conditional placement in September. Now, three months later, she still had not heard anything from PATH about her shelter eligibility or her eligibility for vouchers like CityFAPs. So exasperated, she contacted our office, and we learned that even though she had fled her abuser and shared that fact with PATH at intake, she had not been contacted or evaluated by the NOVA office. In fact, upon filing for a fair hearing, she learned that the city was alleging that she had not cooperated with NOVA. So we advocated for her, and finally, five months after entering her conditional placement, she was found eligible for shelter and able to move forward with her housing surge. But overcoming the hurdle of getting into shelter is just part of the challenge for families with children. Take, for instance, Jane, who several months ago was living in a shelter with her two-month-old son, who had just been discharged from the NICU with liver and kidney issues. Jane was concerned, though, that her unit was not safe. You see, there were rats, and Jane feared they might enter her son's crib and hurt him or otherwise jeopardize his fragile health. Compounding this was the lack of heat, which was particularly problematic, because her son's medication made him more vulnerable to the cold. Jane raised these issues with the shelter several times, and her caseworker had even seen the rats in her unit. Yet, the situation remained unchanged, until she contacted us, and we successfully advocated for her to be transferred. It only took five days for her to get a transfer, once we were involved. So while we generally, we generally support the bills introduced today, with a few caveats that will be set forth in our written comments, we remain concerned that too many families experience barriers to shelter or unsafe living conditions. No one should be subjected to this, least of all, of course, our children.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony. We did have some questions about the conditions and the capital needs, but they were not able to respond to those, so we were not, we were asked not to ask yet.
We've just been seeing an increase in the number of conditions.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, we hear them all the time. People living with bedbugs and roaches and, you know, mice. And again, it's, you know, it's, they shame you for being poor, right? And it's like, you, be happy you have a roof over your head. Yeah, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next panel, and I'm sorry if I ruin your name, Chloe Smith and Juan Diaz.
Does it work? Okay.
Good afternoon, members of the committee, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Chloe Smith, and as Director of Programs at the Children's Health Fund, I lead CHF's Healthy and Ready to Learn program. Today, we're hearing about ways that New York City can better support families with children in DHS shelters. We're happy to support Councilwoman Ayala and others as they introduce bills that will make life a little less challenging for unstablely housed families in New York City. At Healthy and Ready to Learn, we work in schools every day, and we know many of the students and the families whose lives will be meaningfully impacted by these bills. We understand that children need to be in school to learn, not at the PATH Center. They also need to be able to see the board, hear their teacher, to do their best learning. They can't be distracted by hunger from food that is inappropriate for them or for their family, and they can't be distracted by tooth pain and by other challenges. Children and families don't only need supportive policies, they also need programs, services, and other supports that ensure that their health needs are met and that their environments where they live, learn, and play are safe, are connected, and provide opportunities for developing strong relationships with caregivers. HRL provides such support. We work with schools and parents to ensure that students are well-positioned to thrive in school. HRL was developed by the Children's Health Fund in 2014 as part of our mission of supporting kids so they can thrive. Through our current model, we leverage findings from our flagship school at PS49 in the Bronx and in Councilwoman Diana Ayala's District, District Eight, to inform materials and trainings that we conduct with educators and parents citywide through our Resource and Training Center. Launched in 2017, the Resource and Training Center is an online platform that enables Children's Health Fund to scale our impact and reach students throughout New York City. It's hrl.nyc, if anyone's interested in sharing it with the families that you work with. With eight seconds left, I just want to say thank you to New York City Council. HRL reaches thousands of families and educators throughout the city every year, giving students the best chance of succeeding in school and life, no matter their housing circumstances.
Thank you, Chair Ayala and all members of the committee on general welfare for today, all the today's oversight hearing. My name is Juan Diaz, and I'm a policy associate at Citizens Community for Children, also known as CCC, a multi-issue children's advocacy organization. CCC is a co-combiner of the Family Homeless Coalition, a group of organizations united to end family homelessness in New York City. CCC applauds the City Council's efforts to improve our services within DHS shelters. However, to improve these services, implement new programs and retain staff, we urge the City Council to support in calling the restoration of the mayor's 2.5% PEC DHS Shelter Budget Personal Lines cuts. As you know, DHS shelters reduce vacancies and collapse multiple positions into one to meet the mayor's November's budget cut. We will continue to see service delays, longer shelter waits, if the city does not act to fully staff these critical positions. Now, I want to turn to the beings considered today. CCC is happy to know that DHS will no longer require children present at PATH. We strongly support Intro 0123, which will codify the reform to eliminate this inhumane practice. We also strongly support the goals of Intro 124, which will provide process-navigated services at DHS inter-shelter centers for families with children. And also Intro 440, which will provide, require Department of Homeless Services to designate eligibility specialists at shelters. However, we urge the City Council to ensure adequate funding, if appropriate, that adequate funding is appropriated to implement these bills, because we're concerned that DHS shelter providers would have to relocate funding and personnel to fulfill these mandates. Lastly, we support Intro 0453, which would require new shelters and intake shelters, therefore reducing the time of families that children have to travel across town. Thank you for your opportunity to testify, and we've submitted more detailed information.
Thank you. Were you surprised to hear that DHS says that they don't, that their policies that you don't have to bring children in? Because I, I mean, when I go to PATH, there are, you know, so many children just all over the floor, you know, driving their mothers crazy.
Yeah, and I previously joined, I used, I work in social services and homeless prevention, and oftentimes, we used to serve families that were residing double-dubbed, and they had to go to PATH.
Yeah.
And that was one of their concerns, that they had to bring their children, take them out of school, wait for long hours, and it's just a traumatic experience for children as well.
Yeah, I agree.
As long as they have, you know, childcare, as Catherine mentioned.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you both. Our next and final panel will be Ibrahim Javier Johnson and Sharon Brown.
You may begin, just make sure that the light is red.
Yes. My name is Ibrahim Javier Johnson. I'd like to thank Chair Ayala. I do support the legislation that is proposed. I just want to share briefly my experience at the homeless shelter. I was sent to Bellevue Shelter by the VA. I am a veteran, and occasionally, I do have issues with homelessness from time to time. And the VA always sends us to the shelter in New York. That's how they do it here. I went to Bellevue Shelter. I was well-received, I was impressed. That was the first time at that particular shelter. I was impressed at the way the staff handled the single men. However, there was an African family that came there, a father with two sons, 15 and 16. He was given the runaround, because he had documents in French. He was from Burkina Faso, which speaks French. And I live in Harlem, there's a lot of people from that country. I would have just sent him to the mosque, they would have helped him faster. But the worker sent him back to the embassy, and by the way, the embassy's in Washington, DC. She really meant the consulate. It's the consulate in New York, the embassies are in Washington. He was a little bit confused, but she told him he had to have his birth certificates translated by the Burkina Faso consulate. Now, this is 3:00 in the afternoon, and he's walking around with two teenage boys homeless that were sent to the men's shelter. Now, apart from that, I watched him process a person fresh out of prison. He was processed quickly. I was taken care of, I was a veteran. They had a veteran from Florida, came in off the bus from Florida. First day in New York, they sent him right to the shelter, he was okay. They processed a person who had medical difficulties. They helped him, they fed us, they took care of us. I felt safe, and fortunately, a family member found out I was in a homeless shelter in New York City, they sent me a bus ticket to DC. They said, get out of there. But fortunately, I was able to solve my problem, and just to wrap up, I think the system works well, but it could work better for families.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, Sharon, could you make sure that your light is on, the red light?
Yes, my name is Sharon Brown. I think that the family shelters, they have rooms for apartment-style things for people to go to. When people come into the shelter, they, some of them have different scenarios at why they're there. Everyone doesn't need to go through six months or whatever to qualify for subsidies and things like that. If they come in there and they say they're having an issue with the landlord or something that can be solved by looking for an apartment, why don't they take them into their office and say, let's get on the computer and start looking at apartments right now? And then go have somebody take them out the same moment and look and see what they have. They have the financing. If I come in and I said, I have the financing, I have a job here, I own a company, I have children, they're in certain school, we want to go into this area, we just need you to help us out. Why isn't someone there to direct them directly out? They can go into the shelter house or whatever it is and stay there and lay down and relax until they're ready to call them, okay, the first day, second day, the second week, let's go out and look at housings now. Why do they have to wait for six months, a year, and say, oh my gosh, housing, oh my gosh, it's so horrible? There are ads full of apartments, houses, why aren't they sending them out to own homes? Why are they only telling them, come into a shelter to stay? Why aren't they saying, you have all your resources, there's no problems, so let's look and go out on an interview today? Let's call." If I was looking for an apartment, what would I do? Get on the phone. Hello? I want an apartment. Hello? I want a house. And I will go that day. I'm going." Why can't they do that when they go into these places? If the person is prepared, they're having a problem with their landlord or whatever, there should be people who immediately go out and look for housing, or all they need is a computer or something like that. It should be something to fast-track certain people.
I know. I know. I agree with you, Sharon. Thank you so much for coming to testify. Really appreciate seeing you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you guys so much. We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant, the sergeant's table and complete an appearance card now. We are making a final call for Zoom registrants who have not yet spoken. Any? No? Seeing none? Okay. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function on Zoom, and I will call you in the order of the hands were raised. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. With that, this hearing is closed. Thank you.